It's a company out of Fort Wayne, somewhat local, but they're currently already in the building doing all of our fire system, hydrants, sprinkler system, kitchen hood system. So, and one of the companies that was the overall lowest bid, once we added up the two years of warranty, because they only give a three-year warranty, and also all their equipment required, they're required to acquire, but if you ever wanted to upgrade the software, it was twenty dollars per camera per year, and over the course of time, actually, one upgrade ever would put us over what the other companies offered, and they have free upgrades for forever, for life, so. So I didn't know what your guys' thoughts were on upgrading the camera system, or how soon you guys would be looking to do something like that, but.
We'll actually talk about that a little later. Any questions for Eric on the camera system at all?
The camera system, you'd like, was that the one you had told us about?
Yeah.
The one that has some here, other ones here now? Yeah, the company I was kind of, I'm the most familiar with, actually, two of the three where I've dealt with a lot between our current camera system or fire system. The one company I was, I guess I'm the most familiar with is at the Parks and at the Eagles, and they also do the police department here in town, and they end up being the one to have the best things for the buck, so.
Is Eric going to be involved in this discussion? Are they going to talk about that? Are they going to?
Thank you very much for your research, I appreciate it.
No problem.
I have a comment to you. At the recent football games, some of the parents and I noticed when we were at other schools, the lack of lighting, and at one particular game, the visiting side where we were sitting, you couldn't hardly hear the game at all. And so it was so nice to come home to our field, and I even had coworkers know how good the pitchers were because the lighting was so good for a dark football game. It just, my husband even went over to the other side of the field to see how good our sound system was from the visitor's side, and he was highly impressed, so.
A few years ago, we changed overall that lighting system probably three, four years ago.
Just props to you and your team.
Well, thank you.
Again, great job.
Not a good payback for it, we don't use the lights enough, but you can actually see out there, so.
But to get people to comment on how well lit our field is in pitchers?
Yeah.
Is pretty nice.
Thank you.
Six years, right?
Hasn't been that long?
I've been on for six years, about a year after, about five a year.
Mr. Leesty, you are up next.
You're right, then it was 2011. Well, here is a member already, first grade cards have gone home, parent teacher conferences upcoming on, because they were successful and well-attended as always, so it's always good to see our parents get into our building, into our classrooms, and sit down and talk to our teachers, so I appreciate their attendance every year. We've got a lot of upcoming things, I'm going to run them quickly. The third grade fall ELA assessment begins tomorrow, actually, so this week we'll take care of that. That is the assessment that our third graders must show a proficient level in the area of reading to go to fourth grade, so big day for them, big week for them, they've been working hard. This week, two ELA in-service on Wednesday, we're teacher in-service, we're going to continue our, we're going to talk about some gifted instruction, we're going to talk about some school safety items. Veterans Day Assembly this Friday, and I'm going to pause right there and turn it over to Mrs. Kaufman, who has been working on this like crazy for quite a few weeks now. I'm going to turn it over here and talk about that for a second.
So far, we have about ninety, well, we have ninety-seven veterans coming to the building that I have registered, and eight-thirty to nine o'clock, we are doing a breakfast for them, and any middle school or high school student that's invited a veteran is going to be welcome to come to breakfast with them. And then at nine o'clock, the veterans will move into the comments, and we will have the elementary portion of the program. We do two separate programs, K-three for the first one, and four through six. Same program, just a little bit more depth than the second one. And then next year, we're going to expand it, and we are going to actually do a veterans' program for the junior high, high school students from eight to eight-thirty, move into the elementary gym for the breakfast, and then do the elementary portion, so we've got a lot of individuals that are going to be here, we honor them on Friday.
And we've discussed this since we've worked together, we always try to make it academic in some way. Last year was at the white table.
Yes, and this year, we're focusing on the history of the flag. So I'm trying to come up with four different programs so we can rotate every four years. I've been, I've done the veterans program, I guess, for eighteen years at all the schools that I've been at, and I just, I want the kids to be able to take away something. I mean, they're never going to understand fully the sacrifice and the freedom that they've got, but if they can take something away from it, so.
Start learning.
Yeah.
Open to the public, if you want to come in and attend, then I'll be a veteran to attend, so you're all, of course, invited. Good evening, sir, thank you. Our second round of short cycle assessments, we discussed it last month, are scheduled again next week. These are being required to be pushed out digitally this time, most of them were last time too, so our teachers are ahead of schedule on this, but this time, that's an expectation that they're pushed out in digital. Family literacy night will be November fifteenth from six to seven-thirty, that'll be for students in grades Creekade, six, and of course, there's no charge, we invite all the families to come in, our title staff always does a nice job putting that on, so look forward to seeing a lot of people here on that night. I'm going to say in between sports season, so usually helps the attendance. Our elementary musical, I know the kids have all been working hard, they're down at the Huber this week practicing, they're going to put on two different plays or musicals, The Aristocats and the Hundred and Twenty Falmations, that is November eighteenth and nineteenth, showtime is seven PM at the Huber, so for that, a couple of weeks. Thanksgiving break is quickly approaching, no school the twenty-third and twenty-fifth of November, and second midterm grades already on the second of December, won't get back. The elementary spelling bee will be held here December eighth, eight-thirty in the Commons for grades five and six, and then we go to sixth grade camp, wish us luck, December twelfth this year, first time we've done it at least, because I've been here, so hoping for weather like this. It gives by one to snow.
Want to wager?
All the adults do not. So the reason we're going this late is we get the camp to ourselves, we don't have to share it with another school, and we could not go in the fall this year when we usually do, have the camp to ourselves, we would have to share it with a different school. I've never been there when we've shared it with another school, but to have the whole place to ourselves is tremendous, it's a fantastic week up there, so we always look forward to that this year, a little nervous about the weather, but the kids that we find I'm sharing with our kids, so that's what we've got.
I will say, Travis, that I have went there as the elementary principal when we did share with another school, and at camp, they have a piggy waste award for the amount of food left over on your plate. How many years have we had zero piggy waste? I mean, it's just expected, we have no waste.
If they take it, they have to eat it.
Yeah, I mean, it's been that way for probably ten years, and that particular year that we went, I could see at the very first meal, when this other school came, there's no way that it's not going to be piggy waste left, and I made them get two separate places so that we were not part of them. They had eighteen pounds of leftover food at one meal.
Oh.
So, yeah, one meal, and our kids, for probably ten years, have had zero piggy waste, get this little pig award that they send us. It's just an expectation, and you know, we have high expectations here, and there's another silly little example of our kids following through, so nice job. And I'll be up there at least one of the days to see how that is in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Anything else, Mr. Leesty? Thank you very much, Mr. Slatter.
All right, going all the way back to October thirteenth, Mrs. Leon's class had their innovative interviews, I wanted to congratulate the first round winners, Angel Labetz, Michael Schrader, him a pain, Sebastian Yocum, Allison Sturrie, Harley Schuman, and Dylan Early, and again, the community for volunteering their time to come in and participate in the interview process. We had our parent teacher conferences again on October twelfth and thirteenth along the elementary school. Our site is not as well-attended, of course, we're always trying to get people in, it's kind of a, I know I've talked to Steph a few times over the years, and asked her how things are at Bryan and every other school, and I never want to make excuses, you know, but these kids just become more independent, and for some reason, it's just harder for the parents to come in and kind of visit with the teachers, but if anyone has any great ideas they want to share, please do so. October eighteenth, our students attended Northwest Ohio Student Leadership Conference. Again, our kids, they're the best. We have a great group of students here in Hicksville, every year we represent very well the Aces, and we're always the sharpest dressed kids there, so I'm always excited to see our kids walk through the door because, you know, we show up and everyone's wearing shirts, ties, and they look very nice, wearing dresses and everything, so I'm always very proud of our kids. This year's attendance were Gabriel Ferris, Camden Yoder, Kate McGordon, Zach Woody, Angel Labetz, Allison Sturrie, Jennifer Green, and Natalie Swinson, and again, we're very proud of, you know, the time they spent there, the interactive piece of, if anyone remembers the Evolution of Dance, the YouTube sensation, the gentleman that does that dance, he was actually the motivational speaker that day, and then he, of course, did his little dancing, so it was very entertaining. Mr. Payne's class, they went to Ayersville two weeks ago and participated in the race. That's when they all build their physics, the physics class builds their boats, and they go in the pool and see how many laps they can take, and that's always very entertaining. I want to thank Sailor's Pizza and the sponsors of Hicksville, and I apologize, I don't know who sponsored that, we've student of the quarter lunch in, but we do appreciate the effort of, again, recognizing our kids each quarter and the great things they're doing here at Hicksville. I want to thank the junior class, they provided the mother-son competition night, man, I just, I stopped, Google Docs is amazing. Thank you Collins and Gilford for sponsoring the student of the quarter lunch, you just typed it on my computer. Amazing, sorry about that. So anyway, the mother-son competition night, junior class fundraiser, great event, I believe they have eighty-seven elementary school kids there, mom with their mothers, participating in war games, activities in the gym, food was available, and I know that the moms enjoyed it and will report it doing it again. For our fall sports, I want to congratulate Michaela Sullivan, she qualified for regionals this year in cross-country, she did a great job, along with many of our other cross-country runners. Our, congrats to our volleyball program, Nikki Bossman's done a really nice job over the last two years, and it's really grown, the number of participants is amazing, and the success that they're seeing at all levels, and of course, you know, I know the girls wish they could have gone or advanced further, but district finals is still quite the accomplishment, we're very proud of them. I also want to congratulate the football team for advancing to the regional semifinals, they'll play this Saturday at Defiance High School, I believe at the seven o'clock kickoff. Presale tickets will be available starting this Wednesday morning. I believe the tickets are ninety dollars at the door, and they're eight dollars for presale, and again, to the community, if you buy the presale tickets, our school gets part of that. If you buy them at the gate, they all goes to OHSAA, so please keep that in mind. Another thing, the end-of-course assessment scores from the 2016 test season in the spring, those were all mailed home last week, so many of our families are receiving the score sheets on where the kids placed in the core content areas, and depending on what grade you're in, depending on what tests you have taken, there's the freshmen taking ELA, and they take a math course, and then the sophomores take history, math, and language arts, and then the seniors take a government test, so, excuse me, and now they take a biology test, the sophomores take a biology test now, so, again, depending what grade your kid's been in the last two years dictates what tests they have taken, and some of those tests have changed over the last couple of years, and we're hoping they kind of stay the same at least for one more year. But again, those scores have been set home, and if you have any questions about those scores, please contact the school. I will say that depending on the score that your child receives, some students may be retesting to improve grades, because one of the three pathways of graduation, it's not only how many credits you complete at the high school level, which is twenty-three in Hicksville, if you're on the path of using these scores from these end-of-course assessments, you must accumulate eighteen total points, and you can score anywhere from a one to a five on each individual test. So again, if you're really good at math, if you're not as well-versed in ELA, you may have a lower score in ELA, which is supported by your math scores, to give you the opportunity to add to these science and social studies scores to be able to graduate. It's just so much fun, it's awesome, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I presented it to Mr. Countryman, I think it was Friday's meeting, looking at all these numbers and scores, and it's, it is what it is, we'll leave it at that.
The career path is even different.
Yeah, Mr. Better, of course, he knows all about the career paths in Ford County Career Center, and another path is to receive a credential certification from Ford County, and I believe there's like thirty-three different areas of study at Ford County, yet only twelve of those areas have been credentialed by ODE as being eligible for that pathway, and the process is amazing. We were at a Ford County Career Center meeting, and they were telling us the application process for each of their areas, so welding, for example, is not accredited out there. And Ford County Career Center has actually gone through the different job recruiting websites from Northwest Ohio, different newspapers in Northwest Ohio, different companies, we need welders, they put together a presentation, an application, and sent it to the state saying, hey, this is something we need in our area, and their welding application was denied, so if a kid goes into welding, they cannot use that as a pathway to graduate, and it's, Ford County's more upset about them than we are, but we're all irritated with kind of how they're handling this process. Anyway.
Hey, as in ODE?
Yes, yes, so he's kind of a thorn in our side right now, but that's okay, we'll figure it out. Future events, again, on November ninth, this Wednesday, we do have a teacher in-service, as Travis spoke of, and I'm not going to go any further than that. On November tenth, the band is going to Ohio State for a field trip, they're taking, actually, I believe, grade six through twelve, you know, and that's part of, our goal is to increase interest in our band and provide, you know, as Mr. Countryman said, our band is developing in grade six, seven, and eight, and we've got to keep that interest from the sixth grader, seventh graders, and eighth graders into the high school. So that's why we've invited the elementary school up through high school for that. The Veterans Day Assembly on November eleventh, first, I want to say, you know, Mrs. Kaufman, thank you, because I know that she's done an amazing amount of work and time and effort into the program. Currently, we do have the breakfast, which the middle school, high school kid can attend too, and they meet their veterans there and have breakfast and enjoy the morning before they transition to the program at the elementary school side, and what's even more amazing is, you know, our admin team, the five of us, the ability for us last Friday to sit there, and we're almost done with this year's Veterans Assembly, yet the idea of what we're going to do next year has already started a conversation, and Kirsten, and Andy, all of us are all on board, how can we make better? You know, and that takes a lot, you know, when you're working that hard on something, Kirsten, and to hear other people say, well, what about this, and you're more than willing to accept that and want to improve, so we really do appreciate that.
She works with a bunch of guys, and she tends to accept.
That is true, that is true.
She wants to be worth it.
I wouldn't trade it for her. They're pretty cool.
Yeah, and I'm hoping the community itself, just a reminder that the dedication ceremony is this weekend for the memorial, the park, I know our band is going to be playing down there, but just, the more people down there for that ceremony, the better, so hopefully many of us can make it out tonight, I believe it starts at noon, is that correct? Ten, okay, sorry, ten, thank you. That's on Saturday, is that right?
Eleven, yeah, eleven, sorry.
See? Oh, it's Saturday, they're twelve, sorry.
Seventeen, twelve.
What could go wrong?
And the band will be there.
Yes, they will be.
And Senator Height will be there.
All clear. All right, Christmas for kids, it's hard to believe, we're talking about Christmas, it's going November, but ninety-eight point one, and Rick Small will be here on November fifteenth, he'll be set up back by the main event entrance, always a good time, you know, everybody knows Rick Small, he's a hoot, so he brings in people, and a lot of our kids will be on the radio, so tune in to ninety-eight point one to hear what they have to say.
Say the date again.
November fifteenth. And of course, sophomore career expiration day is at Ford County Career Center on December second, and then last but not least, our Ron Clark Academy, our new employees will be attending RCA on December seventeenth to ninth, and we're all looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slatter. Mr. Better?
Yes, Ford County report, big thing is the levy this tomorrow for the election, that's a one-mill levy, and on the average home in Ford County, it's approximately two dollars and fifty cents per month for homeowner, that will generate one million dollars of revenue for the district, much needed, because the career centers have experienced state funding cutbacks versus maybe where how the local school systems are right now, that very, very much needed for the district over there, so please come out and support it tomorrow. Lunchroom report, something I talk about every once in a while from over there, when John was on the board over there, one time I ran in the red, you know, two hundred K, they've got it every year, it keeps getting better, last year we got it down, I think it was below thirty K in the red, but this year it's not starting out so well again, some of that's because of state mandating of certain things, it's not because of participation, we have excellent participation, but it's very, very hard to try to make that so that we have meals that the kids want, and yet cannot cost the district a lot of money to them that they want, because if they don't come, they don't buy, so you got to have it so they want to come, you know, and purchase their meal there that day. So still, still working through that. Some of the long-term things, first of all, finishing up for the end of the year, calendar year, just the normal things that go on within the administration and closing off the calendar year, but we have some, somewhere along the line here, we're going to have to look at the, some of the air conditioning and heating systems that are on the roof over there, some of them are close to the originals, and it's going to be, it's going to be an expensive endeavor, there's five of them up there total, and they're very expensive, so. So we're starting to look at how we can long-term plan for some of that, because it's an issue that's going to have to be addressed. Over the last, something I haven't talked about much, but over the last couple of years, they have taken and got a lot of the water systems and drainage systems, either it was on the roof or on the, or through the basement, or not the basement, but the ground of the school, because the school's just built on the ground there, they've got those rerouted and redone, so to alleviate problems of, you know, water backup inside the building, those projects are all coming to an end. And then there's one other thing I was going to touch on, all the gas lines on the roof now that are fully replaced, they were all original, the front one was built in the late sixties, and those have all been replaced over the last year and a half, so that's been quite a capital expenditure to the project. I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Keith, our kitchen, I know we're self-sufficient, we're operating in black, I mean, what do we typically, at the end of the year, are we, I mean, break even, are we making some money, where are we usually at?
I would say we're about breaking even.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't much, but yeah, they're.
And that's ideally, if you can do that, about where it's breaking.
Yeah, that's about where it was last year, so. And we're very.
We have the same problems with Ford County a few years ago, so.
I'd rather see it operating in the black. Patrick Kennedy, I mean, we were operating, it was to the point that we were transferring money, and there's a lot of school districts that had issues with lunchroom, because of the, because of the menus, you know, that's, that's hard, so.
Since we moved out here, we inhabit the closed lunches, we always operate in the lunchroom, pretty sure.
And they're definitely all closed much there. You get roughly twelve hundred students a day, but you know, you never know how many is going to bring in a lunchroom.
Mr. Countryman?
Yes, I met with John Kayler last week, he's our Niola representative, and we'll have a policy update that most likely will be on the December agenda. What I thought I would do this time is not very big, so I think I'm going to scan it and email it to you, and then you can all review it at the same time, I think it will save a lot of time, that way if you have questions, you can just get back to me that way, but I don't see any reason to make the copies, and then you guys have to pass it around, I can hit everybody all at once with just adding it.
And you're just going to scan the changes, right?
Yeah, it'll all be in the red and blue, just like we always, just like always, you'll just need to get your own scanned copy, and you can look at it electronically, and, is that okay? Eric, Melissa and I met today, actually, to review our big-ticket item list that we had kind of reviewed and put together and went over the last several years, and, you know, kind of in preparation for our workday that we're talking about in January, but a lot of the things, it was interesting to go back over that review, and to see a lot of the things that we have completed from there, like the new scoreboard at the football field, and the bleachers at the football field are now safety, they're compliant and up to code, those are two items in particular that need to be done. And then, looking ahead, we got some things that we're looking at, like we talked about enclosing the bleachers at the track for approximately two thousand, we'll take care of that. I know we fixed some of the doors and stuff down there at the track box over the years too, that was on that list, possibly a different camera system, and then possibly looking at maybe doing some upgrading to our PA system to meet some security needs that, concerns that I have, that I think would be beneficial for our PA system, and also make for easier programming. And then, I know I've mentioned this in the past, probably it's been a couple of years, but the flat block on the building that we had to stain when we moved in, if you look at places where the sun really hits it in particular, like in the courtyard, it's starting to look pretty rough, and I think that's something for the next couple of years that we're going to have to consider.
Stain or seal?
Restaining, it was.
They accidentally put the wrong stuff up when they stained the room.
It's to give the keys on Jimmy.
Yeah.
It'll be something that'll always have to be done, probably every ten years or so it's going to look pretty shabby. There's places on the outside of the building, when I say the outside, I mean the, not in the courtyard, but the outer part of the building, that are starting to show up at the end, the courtyards where you see it the most, I think, don't you, Eric?
Oh, yeah.
Is it, is it the, does the whole building have to be stained, or is it just certain areas?
I think you'd have to do.
They get it matched because it wasn't the right product that was put down, so they don't have to put the same product back down.
Right, okay, but the whole building had the wrong product, we had, the whole building had to be stained originally.
All the flat block, yeah.
Flat block.
All the flat block.
And most of it's tine, it's not material, it's, you know, the lift up around all the high areas driving around.
Because it's just that one section of the slide all the way around the exterior, for example.
Yeah. Have we had pricing on that?
Yeah.
Yep, it's around twenty-five thousand.
That's cheaper than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, I was going to say it's cheaper than I thought it was going to be.
Every ten years is probably the price of a lot.
Probably a couple of years ago, we got the pricing.
Yeah. Yep.
I remember talking about it.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I just think that it's something we should think about and have in our mind, because, you know, we, I think we do an excellent job out here of keeping up the building, the appearance of the building, taking care of what we have, and I hate to let it get too far.
Yeah, we want to keep it looking nice.
Because that's just not what we do, keep things looking nice. Let's see, today, late in the day, I got an enterprise agreement sent to me from Gordon Creek, you might be familiar with this, Danny, so they, actually, the way they worded it, they said, you know, here's a rough, a draft is what they called it, for tonight's board meeting. I did not bring it, because it was after four o'clock, that's too late to get it on the board agenda, and I didn't like the fact that it said draft, so I'll do some looking into that tomorrow, and most likely that'll be here. I did not bring it, because it was after four o'clock, that's too late to get it on the board agenda, and I didn't like the fact that it said draft. So, I'll do some looking into that tomorrow, and most likely that'll be here on December. It's a good thing, whenever a company is expanding or building, that's a good thing for our community, it's a good thing all the way around. So I'm not looking at it in a negative way, I just didn't feel comfortable throwing it on tonight at the last minute, so. Jeff already mentioned the dedication of the Veterans Memorial that I have on here, and the football team. And the other thing that I have is Capitol Conference next week, and you two girls are going, right? Okay, we'll talk about that afterwards, about what time we're gonna leave and so forth. That's all I have.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed? Anyone? No. Okay, so, any motion, please? Every second?
A second.
Roll call. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Minutes and financials? Motion?
So.
Second? Your second is...
Minute.
Ended. Everyone saw the minutes from the regular board meeting, and okay with that? Okay. Treasures report.
Um, I just had a couple of things. Our income tax revenues have come in for the third quarter calendar year at a hundred and forty-five thousand one ninety-three ninety-nine. Those are down. I'm a little concerned about it, I did call a couple of treasurers to maybe just inquire as to why they were so much lower than what they had been last year. And I know that we did have that reduction in our income tax rate, but we were down about thirty percent from what we were last, third quarter of last year. The only thing I could think of in speaking with a couple of treasurers was that it was possibly due to, the farming yields were down last year, so our estimated taxes, people that are turning in estimates, they were down. I'd say like fifteen thousand. And then the, there was something else that had went up, I think the refunds had went up like twenty-seven thousand. I mean, so, it was just kind of, it was kind of a shocker when I looked at the numbers, but I think it was, I, I'm hoping that it was due to some farming issues there. I'm not exactly sure what the answer is, but that's kind of where my speculation is going. Hopefully, the next quarter we'll kind of rebound again and see where we're at.
Yeah, it's kind of amazing, most industries work in...
No, and that's what I'm very confused.
Over to the stuff here, the factories are busy.
And it wasn't as if there was layoffs that I know of. Everything's been pretty consistent, so, the only thing I could think of is like fiscal year fifteen, farmers, some of the crops, they didn't yield as well. So maybe when they did their estimates, their two thousand sixteen estimates, they haven't been as high, not knowing what, you know, revenues they were gonna bring in.
Well, commodity prices were down a lot, so like, the gross, the gross income would be affected.
Right, so, I mean, that's kind of, I'm thinking this maybe centered more around agriculture than, you know, industry. Um, the only other thing I'd like to add is that, and we can, there will be more discussion, I know, but the security cameras and kind of where that money is coming from. I'm still recommending that it come from the three million, but we can turn on and take a look if it possibly coming from the dental fund if that needs to be the case. And that's about all I have.
Questions or comments? Okay, accepting the following donations, one hundred dollars from Lifeline Connect Baptist Church for girls' basketball, one hundred dollars from Stephen and Bobby Irs for girls' basketball, two hundred dollars from Jim Schmidt Family Dealerships for the Archery Club, and two hundred dollars from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for the Archery Club. Discussion? All right, roll call, please? Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Employment of certified staff, a motion, please. Motion. Thank you, Jen. Second?
I'll say.
Recommend to approve Amber Mack as a pride teacher at a rate of twenty-six dollars and twenty-two cents per hour for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. Recommend to approve Amber Mack as zero-hour teacher at a rate of twenty-six twenty-two per hour for the two thousand sixteen twenty seventeen school year. Recommend to accept the resignation for Michelle Weddellman as title one tutor and co-project more advisor effective October twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen. Recommend to approve Katie Hagerty as a part-time title one tutor effective October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, pending background check. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the two thousand sixteen twenty seventeen school year, J. Mas for co-project more advisor. Discussion?
Just so you know, Michelle was ripped from Pauling, and so she, last year, and so she came to Hicksville as a title tutor, and she worked for us before, great employee, and she was called back. So that's good for her, bad for us.
Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better? Yes.
Motion passes five zero, moving on to employment of classified staff. Motion, please. Thank you, Minda.
Sir.
Thank you, Mandy. Recommend to authorize insurance benefits to bus drivers. Bus drivers must drive a morning and afternoon route each school day in order to be eligible. Benefits will begin January first of two thousand seventeen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the two thousand sixteen twenty seventeen school year, pending certification and background check. Danny Captain, co-assistant junior high football coach, Sarah Miller from that made advisor, Jamie Slattery from Minnias volleyball coach, Jeff Ruloff for junior high wrestling coach, Jeff Schrader for co-assistant softball coach, and Mike Belinum for co-assistant softball coach. Discussion?
Yeah, have we offered this to the pass for the bus drivers, or is this something new?
This is new. I've, I've mentioned it a few times over the last couple of years. Several of our, not several, but some of our bus drivers already get insurance because they work enough hours to do that. But, over my time as superintendent and having these conversations and with other people around, getting and retaining bus drivers is difficult because of the lack of benefits. And we have several people interested, but benefits aren't involved. Now, we aren't gonna just hire them and they get benefits, they have to work both morning and afternoon. So, a couple of our bus drivers wouldn't be eligible, because they want drivers just morning or just the afternoon, so.
So, yeah.
You're not talking a lot of money, I don't know if anybody's even signed up.
Wait, um, we're in open enrollment right now, but I think the, I think it's like five hundred, I could be wrong on this, I think it's like five hundred, five hundred dollars a month. Yeah, just the medical portion, but I think it's five hundred dollars a month for a single plan, five hundred, I think so.
How much does it cost us?
Yeah, school district.
They're only eligible for singles. If they choose to do family, then they have to pay the difference between a single and family.
So that's what it costs us.
So we're talking six thousand a year per person that signs up?
They have to qualify.
Per so, per person that's eligible.
That's, that's eligible, so they have to, yeah.
Currently, we have two people.
So there's two people that...
I, they're even taken, I'm just saying.
Potentially.
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 I, I mean, I'm all for the, the have the benefit, and I know that the issue with getting bus drivers or something, I just would like to have a conversation about the cost that it is to the districts.
What would be the cost of a single medical insurance?
I understand that, but gross cost to the district.
Which we won't be able to know until enrollment is over.
Yeah, until they register and enroll.
Understand, understand.
You're insane.
What's our max, what's our max liability that we can be looking at as a district?
At least at six thousand dollars.
Six thousand per person was the max.
How many were eligible? Two people.
Two are currently eligible, how many are eligible total, you know, how many, how many school bus... Yeah, how many positions do we have, so, in the worst case scenario... How, how many bus drivers do we have total?
Six.
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 Six, so there could be a max of six eligible, you know, people with this, depending on the situation. Currently, it's not that, but it could be, it could be, so, go ahead.
But three of them are already receiving those, so it would not be an increase.
That, that's correct, for this year, for this year, but you don't know what, how many people are gonna be eligible in the future. It could be a max liability of up to six people. At six, that you're talking thirty-six thousand dollars under current, under current cost of the medical plan. It could be up to a thirty-six thousand dollar liability to the school district per year, if all eligible employees to that plan would take that and do the plan. Because, because they're, if they want it, and they wanna be eligible for it, you know, they, they have it, we can't deny that if we, if we offer it. So I just wanna know what our max liability, fiscal liability is to the district.
We have six, we have six routes, Danny, so currently three people are already taking the insurance. So if those other three routes converted to full-time positions, meaning morning and afternoon, which two of them aren't already...
Right, I understand that some aren't, as you said, what the max could be, what the max possibility could be. And how many hours a week does a bus driver drive? You know, if they're doing, if they're doing a morning and afternoon route, they're gonna be eligible, okay, it's fifteen hours a week?
Fifteen, that's just the route, that doesn't account the extra trips and stuff that they drive, if they pick, which most of them do. Extra trip routes I'm talking.
Board share, board share is five forty-seven, for the single plan.
Five forty-five, please.
Yeah, a month.
So you're talking seven thousand?
Give or take, close to it. So you can be look, you can be looking at forty-two thousand dollars, close to it, forty thousand, call it, under current, under current cost, for fifteen hours a year.
But half of those are already eligible because they meet the hour length, so they're already getting it.
That's true for this school year, Minda, but it doesn't have to be true for next school year.
Regardless, regardless, the idea is that we need to do something to get bus drivers, because if we don't, we're gonna be driving ourselves absolutely crazy. And it's hard enough to get bus drivers as it is, is it not?
I disagree with any of that.
The three that are getting it will always get it.
Okay, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with any of that, I just wanna understand what our max fiscal liability to the district would be.
So we're looking at, we're half forty thousand dollars a year total with all six, eventually we'd do that.
No, you don't know, you don't know the answer to that.
Like, like one of them, for example, doesn't take it at all, because their husband, their husband, so.
Mr. Countryman? Can I add to what he's asking, I know he wants to know our max financial responsibility?
Possible max financial liability.
You know, on the flip side of that too, I wanna remind everyone that, you know, here at Bassett, there's times where he has to drive bus every day routes, and Jeff falls being pulled away from class, and he needs to drive bus, and Mr. Countryman is driving bus, and, I mean...
I, I understand, it's a, it's a big issue, and I'm not against the insurance, yeah, yeah, I, I, we've had several conversations over the years about this. I, I understand, and I'm not against it in any way, all I wanna do is understand what our max possible financial, fiscal liability would be to it. Because that's, that's what the bottom, that's what the bottom line is here, we're, we're here to monitor that, so, and I understand, thank you.
What kind of contingencies would be in there, because I would assume, how many of our bus drivers of these three that will affect have other jobs? And I guess my question would be, if they could get it at their other employer, would we still offer it here?
Their employee, like, John, but John gets it because he works enough hours through the custodial.
Okay, I didn't know if any of the people that, that...
They have another job and outside, job outside the school.
Like, the Mendez's, for example, Beth Mendez would be eligible, but her husband's not, because Beth works, does morning and afternoon route, and only does the afternoon.
Two, I think we're looking forward, if Mendez leave tomorrow and goes to Texas, how are we gonna fill two positions if we don't have anything to offer people? You know, I know we've spoken farmers, you know, if they have, if we don't have anything except come drive bus for us twice a day, you know, if it's not an attractive package to people, how are we gonna replace bus drivers?
I'm gonna disagree with that, I mean, I don't disagree with that at all. I guess, I'll be honest, I've never heard this ever mentioned before, and if it was...
We have talked about it.
Yeah, did we, I don't remember, but, okay, yeah, we have, it's been quite a while, we have, it's probably...
Two, three times, I think, over the four years that I've been in student county.
Personally, I think it's something that we should have a discussion on prior, and see if it comes to the, to the agenda, that's my, I'm not gonna vote no on it, this is my personal opinion, because I think this is something that should have been discussed a little while.
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna vote yes, but I, I guess I'd like to reiterate what Danny said, because I, I feel kinda the same way on that. And I, I can't disagree with what you're saying as far as taking care of the bus drivers and replacing people, I'm with you there.
Mazer?
Jones.
Jones.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jones, I already had you checked off. Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, with some reservation. All right, moving on.
I'll motion.
Thank you, Jen. You have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Karen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the two thousand sixteen twenty seventeen school year for Philip Carrickson, co-assisted junior high football coach. Discussion? Roll call. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Epstein.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with one extension. Services and agreements? A motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you, Minda. Recommend to approve a sixty-month printer lease with Current Office Solutions, that was in your packet. Recommend to approve snow removal from Hernice Snowplow Service on an as-needed basis for the two thousand sixteen twenty seventeen school year. Discussion? All right. Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Next motion? Any issues?
I'll move.
Danny?
I'll say.
Thank you, Minda. You have a resolution for the Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center from their governing board, because we are under their umbrella, they're just clarifying compensation. Finishing up with procedures for the regulation of operating balances shall be governed by an internal policy of the Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center, and shall not create a contractual guarantee of adjustments at any given fiscal year. The O S E C further reserves the right to modify its policy relating to the regulation of operating balances at any time during the term of this agreement. A copy of the Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center's current policy pertaining to operation balance regulation is attached here too. And it was in your packet, so, everybody gave a chance to scope that. Yes, okay, any discussion? Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Other business?
I'll move.
Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to the volleyball team for their sectional championship and outstanding performances, district runner-ups, runners-up. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to Michaela Sullivan for her outstanding performance at the regional cross-country meet. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to the football team for their outstanding performance in hosting a home district playoff game. All sports doing well, and some are continuing to do well. Any discussion, commentary? Okay, roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. No unannounced guests wishing to address the board, any discussion on anything so far? We are going to be moving into executive session briefly, but we will take no action, so we can... Yeah, it is for items one and two.
Yes? I think a five-minute break?
Five-minute break, and then we'll be back in for executive session.